Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the January Hoboken Board of Education meeting. Ms. Good, can you please read the statement of compliance?
Yes. This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA 10:4-6. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on January 9, 2020, and January 11, 2020. If any member of the public in attendance believes that the meeting is in violation of the Open Public Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The Board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the Board at a later date on CATV Channel 77 and Fios Channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on Board Docs, which can be accessed through the district homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of this meeting, and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Can we take the roll call, please, Ms. Good?
Ms. Calamatori?
Here.
Ms. Delara?
Here.
Mr. Delator?
Here.
Ms. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Cluppel?
Here.
Ms. McGurk?
Here.
Ms. Simons?
Here.
Mr. Carrion?
Here.
Ms. Angley?
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. I'm now going to turn the meeting over to Dr. Johnson to do her superintendent's report before we go into the student recognition portion of the meeting.
Okay, so then I'm going to hold my congratulations for all of our Students of the Month until after those awards are given out. As you know, in March, so in two more months, we're going to be at a Board of Education meeting celebrating not only our students but also staff members and specialists in the district. It's usually one of the most special Board meetings we have. So, we announced the recipients of the Governor's Teacher of the Year Award winners as well as the Governor's Specialist of the Year. I think it was on Friday, so this evening, for those of you who don't know, I would like to congratulate our Governors Teachers of the Year. At the Early Childhood Learning Center at Calabro is Cecily Evans. At Brant Elementary School, it's Megan Tainter. Connors Elementary School, Lauren Schultes. Wallace Elementary School, Jackie Cordero. Hoboken Middle School, Jackie Generelli. And Hoboken High School, Sam Thomas. And for the Specialists of the Year, we have Nori Rojas at the Early Childhood Learning Center at Calabro. We have Jessica Haseback, who is the Guidance Counselor at Brant Elementary School. And we also have David White, who is the Guidance Counselor at Connors Elementary School. I have to say, when we went to every school, David White's response and reaction was probably the absolute best. He didn't know what to do with himself. He wasn't sure if he should stand, if he should smile, if he should... I don't think he knew what was even happening until we put the cardboard selfie sheet in front of him, and then he smiled and realized that it was a good thing that we were there to see him. So, we also have Teresa Karai at Wallace Elementary School. She's one of our very, very talented paraprofessionals. Ivan Ramos, who is our Dean at the middle school. And at Hoboken High School, the very well-known Patty Drumgool, who is on our child study team. So, we're excited about honoring them in March. Like most of our months here in our schools, it's been extremely busy. On Sunday, the Hoboken Public Education Foundation held a dedication of sensory hallways in the name of the late HPEF President Sherrell Pollack. It was a beautiful ceremony at Wallace Elementary School. The day could not have been more beautiful. It was warm. It was... We were so concerned about having to plan for a snow date, and here we were with the warmest weekend that we possibly could have had. So, I think it was certainly a sign, and Sherrell was absolutely in our presence. On Monday night, sensory paths or hallways were put and laid down in Connors Elementary School. And tonight, just got a video from Mr. Matone that they were completed in Brant Elementary School as well. Sensory hallways give children the opportunity to have brain breaks throughout the day and also the chance to recharge and refocus, especially when they are sitting in classrooms for an extended period of time. It's also a great opportunity when there's transitions in between classes for kids to kind of jump and spin a little bit and hop and smile and just be who they are. And that's kids, happy kids. This past week, we were also notified that nine students from Hoboken High School earned acceptances and scholarships to participate in the Study Abroad program over the summer through CIEE. The students were accepted into pretty incredible programs. Global Entrepreneurship in Dublin, Ireland. Australian Wildlife Conservation in Perth, Australia. Spanish Language and Culture in Madrid, Spain. One was accepted and received a scholarship for mentoring youth and connecting with the community in Senegal. Another for Spanish Language and Culture in Madrid. One was accepted and received a scholarship for leadership through Mandela's example in Cape Town, South Africa. One in Spanish Language and Peruvian Culture in Peru, obviously. Another mentoring youth and connecting with the community again in Senegal. And one student will actually be going to Morocco to study the Moroccan culture and language. So, we're really proud of these students. Keep in mind that in addition to these experiences, our high school students will be visiting Greece this spring and the Galapagos Islands next year through the Classroom Without Walls program. But in addition to the Classroom Without Walls program, our students also have the opportunity to travel to Puerto Rico next February for a service learning trip that was actually planned before the devastation in Puerto Rico. So, we're kind of keeping tabs on what that service learning project is going to look like, if it will change, if it will morph, if the timing of it may change a little bit. But we are also seeing, as a school district already, children registering into the school district. Today, we had four children register from Puerto Rico. Okay? The Guidance Department at Hoboken High School has also informed us that the college and university scholarships are now up over $16 million. This is kind of incredible. We talk about this all the time. Just five short years ago, I think the scholarship total was about 1.4 million. So, we're up to over 16 million, and this is for 82 students. So, the numbers are astronomical. College acceptances are rolling in already, and our kids are just waiting patiently for all of those acceptances. We still have a number of instant decision days left with colleges coming directly to Hoboken High School to actually interview children, students, and provide them on the spot with acceptances and scholarship letters. As Hoboken High School debate team begins to prepare for the upcoming season, it's going to invite 7th and 8th grade students to participate in a practice season, to kind of watch and see the magic come alive. Our Harvard Model Congress team has competed in San Francisco over the past 10-plus years, but most recently, they kind of broke away from San Francisco and entered the international stage. They are going to be returning to Spain this year to compete and win multiple awards, just like they did last year in Spain. And here's just the glimpse of their schedule. So, internally, during the month of December, they did some high school mock trial performances. In January, they are going to be inviting students from Hoboken Middle School to come to the high school to actually kind of watch and see what it's all about. They will hold their end-of-the-year family dinner and award celebration, which was very popular, and actually, everyone was so excited about it. It was in May last year, and they had the opportunity to show the video of all the awards. If you have a chance, take a look on Twitter because we posted the link for the video from last year where all of our students that participated, who won awards, were called up in the ceremony. It was really a nice video footage, so it's on, I think, both Twitter and Facebook. You can check that out. They are also getting ready to participate in the Hudson County Mock Trial competition in both January and February. So, we came like this close to... What's that? Okay, so Principal Pica Pietra says we're taking it this year. We were so close last year, and this year, we're pushing for a win in Hudson County. The Model United Nations Debate Competition is in March. That's a very competitive competition. There's the Harvard Model Congress Conference in Spain, like I said, which also happens in March. And in April, our students actually visit the Hudson County Freeholders, and they kind of watch the meeting, but they also have an opportunity to kind of put on a little show as well. At the elementary school level, our Assistant Superintendent's Office just released a comprehensive K-8 curriculum. I believe it's posted on our website already. The comprehensive curriculum includes a Family Life and Puberty Program that will be held in the spring for 5th and 6th grade students and families. We are looking forward to that. This month, we're also going to be hosting a K-12 Digital Citizenship Program for all families. It'll be held at Hoboken High School, but there'll actually be activities for children and families from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. So, when you get the invitation for that, be sure to sign up. The following month, so in February, we're going to be hosting another Title I family event. This time, we're going to be focusing on math with activities and workshops that are being led by the Mo Math Museum and some of our staff members, so we're excited about that. Dinner will be provided, and we are sure to have some geometrically shaped desserts. On the sports and recreation front, we are really enjoying watching our new wrestling team at Hoboken High School. And I think on Facebook and Twitter, a few of our proud parents continuously tweet out the kids after the wrestling matches. We're also excited to see our middle school students participate in the fencing program. If you haven't seen, we've adopted a Grade 5 to 12 ice hockey clinic, and we've kind of coupled that into the Passport to Learning Program along with some ski and snowboarding trips. And for the first time at Hoboken High School, we're going to be adding something that has become popular across the state of New Jersey, not only in high schools but in colleges as well, including the NCAA, and that's esports. So, the kids are actually... A number of kids that are actually really excited about that. It's becoming a scholarship opportunity at the collegiate level through the NCAA, and so high schools are beginning to kind of come on board with it. Programmatically, we're currently assessing technology district-wide in all of our schools, so this includes all Chromebooks, Smartboards, RICO boards. We're also evaluating the Gifted and Talented Program as well as the ILP period at the elementary schools. And finally, we're assessing the impact of vocabulary.com and the use of vocabulary.com at both the middle school and the high school levels. In closing, this is just a reminder that we will be off to celebrate MLK Junior Day, and at February's BOE meeting, I will present a calendar for the 2020-2021 school year after getting input from the association. This is a little bit of a tricky year because the holiday is very late. So, as a result of that, we just have to kind of make some decisions about this opening of school and when that will be. So, I'll probably present a couple options to the Board at the upcoming committee meetings, and then we can make a decision and hopefully have it Board-approved in February, much earlier than in the past, so families can plan their vacations and so on and so forth.
Thank you, a lot of good news. Now, we will turn the meeting over to Ms. Rodriguez Gilvez for our student recognition portion.
Good evening, members of our esteemed Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, administrators, faculty, families, and of course, the most important, our students who join us here this evening. At this time, we will celebrate all of our students or the students that were selected in all of our schools who have done their very best to show us their very best. We will begin with Joseph F. Brant's principal, Mr. Bartlett. He will celebrate his selection, and after pictures at the podium, we'll introduce the Connors principal, Ms. Addy. She will follow the same pattern, introducing our next presenters, the Principals Shannon, Abraham, and Pica Pietra of Wallace the Middle School and the High School respectively. I would ask that you remain at the podium for pictures, and I want to give a huge thank you to our photographer for the evening, Vice Principal Baker. And with that, I would ask Principal Bartlett to come on up and get the show started. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call up to the podium Talia Susie, the Joseph F. Brant Elementary School Student of the Month for December 2019. Congratulations to Talia Susie, the Brant Student of the Month for December 2019. Talia was nominated by her 3rd grade teacher, Ms. James. Ms. James said, "Talia comes to school every day with a smile on her face, ready to learn. She is dedicated to putting her best foot forward and puts a great amount of effort into everything she does. She always goes above and beyond with her assignments and makes sure that everything she hands in is of the highest quality and has, quote, 'Talia's touch' to it. She is very supportive and kind to her classmates and is always a great role model in and out of the classroom. As principal, I can't help but notice that Talia very quietly and unassumingly stands out without calling attention to herself. She is noticed for being a positive role model and example to her peers in every setting throughout the instructional day. Indeed, she typifies setting good examples for all to aspire to replicate. Talia's creativity shines both in and out of school. This year, she advanced a level in guitar. One of the things she is most proud of is how much faster she has gotten with typing on the computer. She is also constantly amazed at how much she is able to write and loves when her classmates compliment her on her amazing stories and creative drawings. She is a huge asset to the Brant community for many reasons. Talia does a fantastic job of being respectful to both her peers and teachers. She is dependable and reliable and is always there to help a friend in need. Whenever a classmate is stuck on a problem or unsure of directions, Talia will help them without being asked to do so. Talia is always willing to put in extra time and effort to make sure her assignments are completed with 100% effort. When a task is assigned, Talia is attentive to the instructions and works diligently to complete quality assignments in all of her classes. Talia loves to play guitar, read any and all books, and hang out with her best friends. She also loves to play with electronics. However, her goal for the new year is to use less electronics and play more board games with her mom. Talia loves both math and literacy, but she prefers to write. She used to want to be a musician, but now she thinks she wants to be an author when she grows up. We have no doubt that Talia will indeed be able to accomplish all of her dreams. Congratulations once again to Talia Susie, the Joseph F. Brant Elementary School Student of the Month for December 2019. At this time, I would like to call to the podium the Principal of the Connors School, Ms. Juliana Addy.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce Noah Lopez as Connors Student of the Month. Congratulations to Noah Lopez, the TG Connors overall Student of the Month. Noah Lopez is an extremely hard worker. He has stepped up and accepted the challenge of being a school leader and role model, and now he is in the 5th grade. Throughout the year, he has learned to stay focused during instruction and implement strategies whenever he feels like he needs a short break. Whether he chooses to complete his work on a beanbag chair, use a timer, or take out a tangle web, he does whatever is necessary to complete the assignments on time. Noah has always had an interest in mathematics and has excelled at it. However, this year, his reading and writing skills have greatly improved. He now takes pride in his writing and volunteers to share his final products with his peers. During our novel studies, Noah has demonstrated the ability to make real-world connections to the characters and apply higher-order thinking skills. Also, during our Reading Buddies Bees program, Noah models fluency and expression while reading to our kindergarten and 1st grade reading buddies. This year, Noah has joined the Connors School Band and recently put on an amazing performance at Hoboken High School. Regardless of the task, if Noah puts his mind to it, he is successful. I am so proud of the progress Noah has made throughout his time at Connors Elementary School. Congratulations. Keep up the great work.
Now, I would like to call up Mr. Martin Shannon, Principal of Wallace Elementary School.
Good evening, everyone. At this time, I would like to call Tyler Smith to the podium as the Wallace School Student of the Month for December. Tyler was nominated by his 3rd grade teacher, Mr. Peterson, for his academic excellence, humble disposition, and thoughtful demeanor. Tyler is a remarkable student. He is intellectually curious and takes great pride in learning. Though Tyler is blessed with a keen intellect, no one works harder than he does. Tyler is a straight-A student and will be for the foreseeable future of his academic career. Tyler's impressive academic ability is paired well with his endearing humility and genuine appreciation of his peers' thoughts and opinions. As his principal, I can always count on Tyler to carry himself in a manner that represents the attributes we hold dear: honesty, humility, hard work, academic integrity, and compassion. Tyler embodies these and many other attributes. He is a strong representation of what being a Wildcat is all about. When asked why Tyler should be nominated, Mr. Peterson stated, "In my 19 years in education, Tyler is one of the most thoughtful, caring, and sensitive children I have ever had the privilege of teaching. Every teacher should be so lucky to have Tyler as a student. Every parent should be so lucky to have Tyler as a son. Every kid should be so lucky to have Tyler as a friend. Mr. Peterson holds his students to a high level of integrity. Tyler meets these high expectations on every level." Tyler is a huge sports fan, especially basketball. He always has his sights on the future, becoming a paleontologist. When asked about Tyler, another teacher was quoted in saying, "Best kid ever." Tyler himself was quoted in saying, "Everyone can try, or everyone can be nice if they try." This speaks not only to Tyler's own personal belief in the power of kindness, this shows his belief in the goodness he sees in others. When Tyler was asked how he felt about being nominated as the Student of the Month, he responded, "I feel happy, and I think anybody could do it if they really try. You don't have to be a special person, you just have to be kind all the time." Congratulations, Tyler, for being nominated Student of the Month for Wallace Elementary School.
At this time, I'd like to call up Dr. Abraham, Principal of Hoboken Middle School.
Good evening. At this time, I would like to introduce the Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month, Nicholas Petrazzelli. Nicholas Petrazzelli was nominated by Mr. Anderson and the Grade 7 faculty. He is an extremely reliable, dedicated, and hard-working student. Nicholas demonstrates an outstanding attitude towards his studies in every situation he encounters at Hoboken Middle School. He regularly participates in class and sparks an interest and conversation in every class he attends. This makes a tremendous difference in the learning environment and ultimately catapults instruction to a very high level. As Principal of Hoboken Middle School, it is my distinct pleasure to award Nicholas Petrazzelli with the Student of the Month Award for the month of December. I remember meeting the Petrazzelli family last school year as a prospective family of our school. It was obvious then, and certainly now, that they would flourish at Hoboken Middle School. Nicholas and his twin brother, Joseph, wasted no time in becoming fully emerged in all that Hoboken Middle School has to offer. When Nicholas was asked what he enjoys most about Hoboken Middle School, he responded very quickly and confidently, as he always does. With greatest excitement, he mentioned an array of hands-on activities and lessons created by his teachers. He talked about walking to Peer C to conduct a peer review in the writing process. He talked about a math lesson where he and his classmates calculated their vertical leap and logged this data. This was a fun lesson to watch. Another student even came up to me and said, "You really have to watch Nick, he really has some hops." And so I did, and I confirmed the statement, and he recorded a vertical leap of 16 inches. I was very impressed. I have no doubt that at some point in the very near future, he's going to be dunking. Nicholas mentioned having great respect for all of his teachers and knowing that they all genuinely care for their students. He stated, "It's a great feeling knowing that your teachers and principal really care about you. It's like a family here." As I held back a tear, I smiled and gave Nicholas a big high five. He's right. We are a family, and we really do have an amazing group of teachers. I also made sure to express my deepest appreciation for his amazing attitude. It's because of his outlook and approach that he is able to achieve at the very high level, which he does. I'm also proud to acknowledge that he was one of our students that was recently awarded for caught being kind because of this same attitude and attributes. Nicholas is also an active participant in the Passport to Learning Program, where he's absolutely in love with the winter basketball program. Nicholas, in fact, plays on two teams and carries over many of the teachings from this sport and to his academics, including grit, determination, and the importance of hard work. When asked about his recent game against Stevens, he immediately mentioned his nine assists, followed by his 16 points. The fact that he mentioned his assists first shows a lot about his character and who he is as a person. Commonly, when you ask a student about their game, they typically tell you how many points they scored first. He was very, very certain to make sure that he talked about his assists and how important that was to not only him but his teammates as well. that was to not only him, but his teammates as well. Nicholas always wants others to excel, whether it's on the court or in the classroom. Nicholas has proven to be a goal-oriented and hard-working student. Once he puts his mind to accomplishing a task, there's no stopping him. Nicholas has made high honor roll for marking Period One and set the goal for doing this each and every marking period for the 1920 school year. Nicholas makes me proud each and every day to be a Hoboken Middle School Tiger, and I'm excited to see his continued success. Congratulations. At this time, I would like to call to the podium the Principal of Hoboken High School, Ms. Pika Pietra.
Good evening. I'd like to call up Mia Giliard, our December 2019 Student of the Month, a senior at Hoboken High School. Mia is amazing, and I have been with her since she joined us in the seventh grade. I had the pleasure of knowing Mia's family through her older brother, Terrence, who is as wonderful to our school as Mia is. Mia, if possible, has grown every year academically and socially since she has been with us. Nominated by Ms. Chekhov, she said Mia is a wonderful student. She proactively cares about her grades and infuses effort into all of her assignments, and her contributions and questions during class discussions are extremely valuable. She also sought help from other teachers, mentors, with her college essay. And not only is she polite to all, but she is observant and helpful to our teachers and peers. Ms. Tang shared Mia's a very positive attitude towards her academics. She works extremely hard to understand and overcome any and especially advanced problems with an inquiring mind. She also has great respect for her teachers and fellow classmates. In backstage, Ms. Miller added, "She is insightful in the creative process of designing props and set pieces for the theater department. I appreciate her work ethic and maturity in taking her classwork seriously. She definitely has a bright future." Academics are only a glimpse of Mia. She is the Secretary of the National Honor Society, as well as the African-American Culture Club. She is a member of the National Spanish Honor Society, the Agape Club, captain of the cheer and is captain of the cheerleading squad. But I think one of her biggest accomplishments is being the president of the Student Council. Mr. Baughfield added, "Mia is a well-rounded student who personifies genuine leadership, school spirit, and pride. She is a hard worker and a devoted student leader. As president of the Student Council, Mia leads by example. For instance, she, along with other students, are planning a disaster relief fundraiser for Puerto Rico. She is always thinking on her feet. She is soft-spoken, intelligent, articulate, and an excellent role model for underclassmen to emulate. In my opinion, she has the true red-wing grit of never giving up in the face of adversity and will look for solutions. Her maturity over the past four years is commendable." I sat down with Mia to find out what the future holds in store for her. She's definitely going into nursing. She hopes to attend Rutgers or Montclair, and I think I convinced her to live on campus. She has received acceptances from Lincoln University, Caldwell University, Georgian Court University, Felician University, Centenary College, Keene University, and JCU. Choices, obviously, are not a problem. In her spare time, she honestly likes to relax, which I think we can all understand. While she is not in a sport for the winter season, she keeps the books for the girls' basketball team. Her friends describe her as a really funny person and an extremely loyal friend. Attributes she should be proud of. I would describe her as a grounded, kind, intelligent, and lovely young lady that will be a fabulous nurse, and any patient would be lucky to have her by their side. I sat with her for like fifteen minutes, I was like, "Mia." She's a few words, she's definitely not a talkative person, and I talked the whole time. She's a girl of few words, and she just said that she is honored to receive this award. Well, we are honored to present you with this award. Keep up the great work.
Congratulations to each of our students recognized tonight. We are all very proud of each and every one of you and look forward to seeing what the future holds for each of you. At this time, we will take just a few-minute break for anyone that needs to leave before we get into the business portion of our meeting, so we'll take just a few minutes and then reconvene. Thank you. All right, we're going to get started again. Ms. Good, we'll start with the Business Administrators Report, if you have one.
No, I don't know.
No? Okay, next, we'll move on to Board Committee Reports. And before we start, I just want to point out that in February, we'll be doing a little restructuring of our committees and our committee chairs, but as always, the Board meets in committees the week prior to the public Board meeting. All notes are distributed to the full Board along with the agenda, so Board members have time to ask questions, et cetera, before the Board meeting. And with that being said, we'll start with Curriculum and Wellness. Ms. Delara.
The Curriculum and Wellness Committee met on Wednesday, January 8th. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Rodriguez Gomez, Ms. Angley, Ms. Simons, and myself. Some of the items discussed, Dr. Johnson covered in her Superintendent Report. I just wanted to point out that we are currently working on a health curriculum for grades K to 2, 3 to 5, and 6 to 8. We will also have a Family Health Day, which will be held on May 13th. Digital Citizenship Night is on January 28th. Please make sure to RSVP for that. We also talked about a Showcase of Excellence, similar to the high school Showcase of Excellence, which is very popular and everybody attends. The district will be holding a K to 8 Showcase of Excellence. That's something that we talked about. I think it's a fabulous idea. It's a great way to showcase our curriculum, our PTOs, HPEF, you know, after-school programs, and so on. The date for that is still, it's to be determined, so we will share that with you when we have it. Congratulations to all the Governors, Teachers, and Specialists of the Year. And we also discussed, I'm sorry, the World Language Curriculum, which is currently being revamped for middle school and our elementary school grades. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Facilities, Ms. Simons.
The Facilities Committee met on Wednesday, January 8th. Attendees were Dr. Johnson, Mr. Caligy, Ms. Angley, Ms. Katamatori, Ms. Takirian, and myself. One item requires Board approval this month and is recommended for approval. The Hoboken Family Alliance has submitted a facility request for their cabin fever event on February 23rd. Mr. Caligy was pleased to share with the committee that the CUSAC facilities walkthrough is complete and that the district received all possible points. The committee also discussed that the main hot-water heater at the high school has failed and that a replacement was necessary. Installation was scheduled for the end of last week. And lastly, we discussed the new living classroom at the middle school. Three tanks are up and running, two very large touch tanks, and one smaller tank. The district has received our license from the NJDEP and is now working with the Conservancy of NYC in order to accept the Terrapins. Once they arrive, fish for the smaller tank will be next. Phase two of the project will include bass, eel, and seahorses.
Thank you. Moving on to Finance, Ms. Takirian.
Hi, good evening. Finance Committee met on Tuesday, January 7th. In attendance were Ms. Good, Ms. Angley, Mr. Delatorre, Ms. McGurk, and myself. We discussed all agenda items and recommend all for approval. A few of note or that sparked more discussion during our committee meeting are as follows: 10.04, Approval of Payroll. There were three payrolls in December, with the 1221 payroll representing overtime for overtime-eligible employees. 10.06, Approval of Tuition Contracts. In addition to new or amended out-of-district placements, there's a light item to approve the out-of-county fee that is required when sending a student to a county school rather than within Hudson County. The tuition for this placement was already approved in a prior month. 10.08, Approval of Standard Operating Procedures Manual. This is for the purposes of CUSAC credit, the Board should be approving this procedure manual each, procedure manual, excuse me, each year. And 10.11, Acknowledgement of Receipt of Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for Financial Year 2019 and Approval of Financial Year 2019 Corrective Action Plan for the Hoboken Board of Education. The Finance Committee met with a representative of the independent audit firm, Lurch Vinci Higgins LLP, to review the 2018-2019 school-year audit. The auditors issued an unqualified opinion, meaning that, in their judgment, the financial statements are fairly and appropriately represent the financial position of the Hoboken Board of Education. The Financial Year 2019 Corrective Action Plan refers to just one item, caused by a typographical error in the categorization of transactions in the Capital Projects Fund. Ms. Good and her team will ensure that all transactions for 2019 and '20 are categorized properly in the system, and that future expenses will be categorized more granularly. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Governance, Ms. Connor.
The Committee met on Wednesday, January 8th, at 6:30 PM. In attendance were Ms. Angley, Ms. Takirian, Ms. Delara, Dr. Johnson, and myself. The Committee reviewed all agenda items in Section 9 and recommends all for Board approval. All agenda items are normal course of actions. Just a few items to highlight. Under 9.02, Dennis Somerville will be the new theater teacher for middle school and elementary school effective now, and Teresa Danna will be the new guidance counselor for the middle school effective February 1st. And under 9.03, there were zero confirmed HIV cases. And that's it.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the Board? No? Okay, we can move on to public comments on agenda items.
We have two individuals that signed up. Ms. Samantha Glass, you're first, and follow Samantha would be Ruth Tyroller.
Okay. I just want to remind you of the Board policy. Please state your name, municipality of residence, and business affiliation, if any.
Ruthie Tyroller, 339 Bloomfield Street in Hoboken.
Samantha Glass, 918 Willow Avenue in Hoboken.
Good evening. Samantha Glass and I have come this evening to talk about the Debate for Peace Program, which is a high school field trip which the students will be going on. As you know, my name is Ruthie Tyroller, and I am the Administrative Director of the United Synagogue of Hoboken. I love my job because my mission is to grow a vibrant, caring community that not only takes care of each other, but also is committed to improving the lives of those in the local community, state, nation, and world. Sadly, as of late, my job is about security, and guards, and police, and sheriffs, and lockdowns, and the worst, a shiva for a Jersey City mother of five, five miles from my home. This past Sunday, a summit was held in Bergen County with legislators and law enforcement to address the dramatic and disturbing rise in anti-Semitic bias crimes in New Jersey. New Jersey had the third-most anti-Semitic incidents in the country in 2018, behind California and New York. The suspects in the Jersey City shooting are now known to have attacked a Jewish individual prior and had a bomb in their vehicle, which would have killed or harmed those in an area the size of five football fields. And just on a side note, that's why Officer Seals is a hero, because if he had not interrupted them that morning, and if they probably, at that point, decided, "Let's just go for it," that would have, it would have been a completely different story if they had probably done it the way we imagined they had planned. The Anti-Defamation League recorded 200 anti-Semitic incidents in New Jersey in 2018 and continued to record high levels of anti-Semitism in 2019. In addition, according to the most recent FBI data available, race-based hate crimes have increased 125%, and anti-Jewish hate crimes have increased 108% in New Jersey since 2016. Most disturbing is most of these crimes are being committed by young adults. Humans are born with the instinct to love, not to hate. Hate is a learned behavior. I feel so fortunate to be part of a community where bias incidents are extremely rare. I am particularly fortunate to have my son in Hoboken High School, a school where the students and teachers welcome people of all persuasion with open hearts. We need to ensure that our curriculum includes anti-bias education and programming in an age-appropriate manner. We are so excited that a group of Hoboken High School students are attending this program with Mr. Huggins and Principal Pika Pietra. And just before I turn it over to Samantha to describe the program, I just want to comment that when I was elected to the Board in 2009 with two other women, people said to our competition who had lost, "You lost to the Moms?" And now I look up here, and man, the Moms have really, really won. And Tom, and Alex. It's good you're representing, but loyal board. So with that, I'd like to hand it over to Samantha Glass.
Thank you so much. So my name is Samantha Glass. I was born and raised in Hoboken. I actually substitute-taught at the Hoboken Public Schools throughout college, my college breaks. I am now a sixth and seventh-grade English teacher at Emerson Middle School in Union City. And I live in 918 Willow with my parents, but we just moved to Jersey City. I moved to Jersey. Anyway, so this summer, I participated in a teacher training program called TALMA in Israel, which is funded by the Israeli Department of Education. I co-taught with an Arabic-speaking co-teacher in the north of Israel, in a little Druze village named Magar, called Magar. And my co-teacher and I swapped professional development tips, what we do in the United States, what he does in his small village of Israel, in Israel. And we co-taught a fourth-grade English class together. Very excitingly, he is a high school teacher in the south of Israel currently this year, and he runs the Debate for Peace Program, an international, well, a national program in Israel, part of the International Model United Nations organization. His program, Debate for Peace, brings together Arab and Jewish students from more than sixty cities around Israel, as well as Palestinian cities. These students are Jewish, they're Bedouin, they're Arab, they're Muslim, they're Christian, really, it's like a United Nations within Israel, to participate in international model United Nations conferences, where they debate, negotiate, and try to resolve the most difficult and pressing challenges in international relations. Debate for Peace is supported by a grant by the American Embassy in Israel. Luckily for us, they will be participating in the Yale Model United Nations Conference at the end of next week, but prior to that, they'll be visiting Hoboken and staying with members in our community. And on Monday night of Martin Luther King Junior Day, we will be hosting a panel discussion and pizza dinner at the United Synagogue of Hoboken to hear these students speak about their experiences, as well discussing the work that they do in Israel, and how we can use the techniques that they've learned to solve conflicts and eliminate bias here at home. In light of current events, unfortunately, in Jersey City and around New York and New Jersey, we think this is an especially important event to invite the entire community, especially high school students. So, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next, we will move on to the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any items to discuss or to poll? No? Okay, can we have the roll call, please?
Ms. Katamatori.
Yes.
Ms. Delara.
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre.
Yes.
Ms. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Cluffville.
Yes.
Ms. McGurk.
Yes.
Ms. Simons.
Yes.
Ms. Takirian.
Yes.
Ms. Angley.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, moving on to public comments on agenda and non-agenda items.
None.
None? All right, well, that concludes our meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second. All in favor say aye. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.